Ready? Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the special meeting with the City Council, City of Heelsburg. And this evening, we will begin with a note that one of our fellow council members is not present tonight, would be Councilman Noyokis. But all four of us are here, and we'd like to begin with the Pledge Allegiance, please. All right, and just to begin the meeting, we have an approval of our special meeting agenda. Are there any motions to approve that?
Prove approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And so next, just to clarify, City Clerk, do we go to public comments on the agenda? Or do we want to move into our new business?
Yes, you can make public comment about what is on the agenda.
Another option.
If you would like, or go ahead.
If you actually look at, Madam Mayor, if you look at the language we have included now on the agenda, specifically it states that the public comment will be taken on the items when the item's considered.
Yeah.
So, no need to take public comment at this time.
Okay, so it's there because it's there. All right, so we'll move on then, I believe. I'll move on to the business at hand. So we are, this evening, reviewing the current fiscal year budget and presentation on changes affecting all budgets. And then secondly, we'll be reviewing and providing direction to staff on the proposed 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 budgets for the General Fund, Community Services Fund, and Measure V funds. So with that, thank you. I'll turn that over to City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember. So, we're actually in the home stretch of the budget process at this point. Remember, we started this back in January, when the Measure V survey went out. We followed up with a Measure V meeting, followed by goal setting, and then, of course, we had our Community Budget 101 meeting previous to this. So, what we've been doing over the months, the staff has been working collaboratively, taking a look at revenues and expenses from each of these budgets, which we'll be discussing tonight, and also on Thursday, which we'll be discussing, the enterprise funds. But at this point, what I'd like to do is hand it off to Assistant, excuse me, City Manager I Poletti, to discuss the General Fund, and then we'll talk a little bit about the Community Services Fund and Community Services CIP, and then we'll finish up with Measure V. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. David just went through what we're going to talk about. He also went through the budget process that started in January. We're now into the study sessions for today and Thursday, and with a goal of budget adoption on June 4th. So, before we can talk about what our next two years are going to look like, I want to just do a current year review of the General Fund, give you some highlights about where we expect the year to end, and I'm going to start with revenue. The city is expected to receive 100% of the budget, 4% more than last fiscal year, and we've seen a slight increase due to fire disaster. And what I mean by that is, just the quarter of the fire, we actually saw a bump in sales tax primarily related to construction and car purchases that were not anticipated. We're going to see that, what we think we're going to see that is through the rest of this fiscal year, and a little bit into next year. The city contracts with HDL for sales tax projections. The property tax, we're expected to receive 100% of the budget, but 3% less than last fiscal year. And that 3% less than last fiscal year is actually related to the fire disaster again. Even though we had no loss within our boundaries, there is a Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 96.2 and 4707, where all adjustments related to the fire are allocated using the countywide AB-8 factor. That means, for the current fiscal year, property tax revenues were reduced for all Prop 13 tax agencies in the county, based on that AB-8 factor, and not just for the taxing agencies that incurred a loss. So, our budget is accurate, but without the fire, we would have seen a slight increase, and we did get a reduction of about $59,300. RDA residual receipts, we're expected to receive 200% of the adopted budget, 33% more than last fiscal year, and that is just a bad budget number, and that will get better for the next biennial. And this revenue really should be consistent going forward. It fluctuates slightly based on assessed valuations, but also the expenses of the successor agency, and with the recent refunding, that really should be consistent going forward. Other revenue is the development-related permits. This category includes the building and plan check and permit revenue. The city is expected to receive 157% of the budgeted revenue, a 26% increase over last year. Over 589 permits were issued year-to-date. And I'm really looking forward to more data going forward with the implementation of the new Intergov system. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of data easily accessible by just printing a report going back, but going forward, I'm looking forward to more of that data. Charges for services, this category includes the fire services contract, which does include a CPI inflator, the strike team reimbursements, and the successor agency administrative costs reimbursements. We did see a significant increase in strike team activity, and therefore reimbursement in this category. An overall 25% increase over last fiscal year is expected. TOT, the city is expected to receive 114% of the adopted budget, 10% more than last year. We're going to talk a lot more about TOT when we talk about the next two years, and what I expect to see there. The miscellaneous line, I want to just talk a little bit about this, because it seems to go up and down. The budget is $23,210, consists of $23,000 for the garbage contract, that is where we get the money for, that we give to the American Legion, plus an additional amount, and then $200 for TOT late fees, and a $10 expected from sales of miscellaneous surplus equipment. The city receives much more revenue in late fees than the 200, and an unanticipated prior year expense reimbursements, fees for copies, as well as CalCard rebates. Going forward, we're going to see a higher budget amount in this, because we can really look back at past years for consistency. But when I dive deep into that number, a review of the account activity, there really is no large single revenues. It's really all of that miscellaneous little stuff. In fiscal year 1617, the city received larger amounts in expense reimbursements related to code enforcement cases and employee disability retirements. Here's a summary of that. Overall, I expect the revenue to come in 8% over last fiscal year, 112% of the amended budget.
If I could add briefly, remember back in October when we had the fires, our TOT dropped, I want to say 11%? But you can see since then, we've made it up, and then some. So we're actually ahead of the curve with regards to TOT, even with the significant downturn from October fires.
I want to be able to give you opportunity for questions as I'm going through this. So, this is the revenue. The primary discussion is, is this current fiscal year and where we expect to close. A lot more discussion of revenue will come forward as we're talking about the proposed two years. So if there's no questions on this, I'll move into the expenses for the current fiscal year. Okay? All right. This is a picture of the general fund expenditure by department. I'm expecting 105% of the current year's budget, about the same as last year, a little less, or a little more, to the tune of $3,000 or so, more than last fiscal year. City Council, $25,000, the $25,000 to the Jazz Festival was coded to the City Council expenses, but there's an offset into the transfers in, so they offset each other. The Jazz Festival wanted their $25,000 this fiscal year versus last, or next fiscal year, and so it did need to hit in this current fiscal year. City Attorney expenses is over budget. I think the City Manager and I will talk a little bit more about that when we come to the next fiscal year. City Manager's office is expected to end at 82% of the current budget. Most of that is related to salary savings in vacant positions. Finance came a little bit above the budget. A couple things, there's some contracted services that came in a little higher, primarily the cost allocation plan and the master fee steady update, as well as some actuarial services that we looked at, too, as well as some temp agency services that we had to hire for vacant positions. Planning and building, pretty much 100% of budget. Police, a little high in overtime, as well as legal costs, dealing with a personnel matter. Fire, the 16% over budget is primarily related to strike team, but then you've got that reimbursement that comes in the revenue side. Insurance, insurance transfers out is primarily related to debt. And in 1617, you'll see that, so 58% less than prior year. That is because in 1617, we transferred about $1.2 million to the General Capital Replacement Fund, per our reserve policy. And again, 105% of budget, 0% change versus prior year. Any changes in this, or any questions to this? No, we're good?
Question. So on the City Council, at the very top, the expense that you're speaking of is our medical plan. Is that correct? That's pretty much it, right?
No, no, no. It's the 134% of budget is what you're talking about. What's in the City Council budget is your stipend, it's your medical costs, as well as support of outside organizations, which includes normally just the American Legion fireworks of $8,000, and the Hillsburg Future Farmers of $9,000, but then this year, we had the $25,000 to the Jazz Festival. Also, what's in the Council budget is contracted services, such as lavish for filming these meetings. That's a new expense this year, as well as some council leadership training, and then meetings, travel, and training. Some, let's see, some membership dues, as well as a small amount to office supplies, and government fees is our CPA. So that essentially is the whole Council budget, but a large portion of it is your medical costs.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Sure. These are the same numbers, just looking at them a little differently. General fund expenditures by function. Big wages and benefits is the strike team, as well as some benefit costs. Legal, higher, legal is our current basic legal with Burke, Williams, and Sorensen. That's the, oh, the support of the local organizations that were, that's the Jazz Festival. Again, I'm just looking at the same numbers a couple different ways. Okay? All right. Fund balance analysis, this is the important thing. Where do we expect to end the current fiscal year? We expect it to end by fully meeting the reserve policy, which is 30% of annual expenditures, with 3.0, almost 3.5 million put away in the pension stabilization fund, with an excess of almost a million in unrestricted, unreserved. So, it's over 60% essentially of the annual expenditures in our fund balance. The envy of probably most Sonoma County cities.
If I could add to that, I think it's closer to 65%. That's pretty significant, that's a significant number when you take a look at the money that which the city has put aside for pension stabilization, our reserve policy, and where we are with the unrestricted, unreserved. That doesn't include the $160,000 in ending fund balance either. So close to 65% is a significant number that probably this council can see and appreciate the hard work that Ms. I Poletti's been doing to move these, move these numbers in the right direction, with, of course, with council's direction, so I appreciate that.
May I ask how much it costs to do the shift, how much it costs to actually do that out of the budget a year? I mean, in terms of this new deal in 2018?
In...
To have the video, because it looks like other commissions are also online now.
The council meetings, we have about $10,000 set aside just in the council budget, and there's a little bit in each other budget, so it's...
About 10 grand a year?
10 grand a year, not for all of the commissions. 10 grand a year is about for the council meetings.
Okay.
So it's, it's great transparency, but there is a cost.
Yeah, no, I just was curious, because I was looking at the 211. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. If there's no other further questions, I'd like to proceed into the proposed budgets, now that we at least have that foundation. Okay. First, I'm going to talk about changes affecting all budgets before I go into the general fund. This is some important things, and these are things that you're going to hear me talk about a lot today, as well as Thursday, because all of these things, I think there's five of them, that really you'll see will impact all of the budgets. Increased personnel costs. You've got wages. There's all wages where it will be increased as of July 1, as of 3.6%. That is based on the adopted MOUs. There was a CPI increase provided in those MOUs, and that number is 3.6%. Medical premiums, they went up 5%. So you're going to see that benefit going, you know, hitting our budgets, in every budget across the city. The other thing that's gone up is internal service funds. Internal service funds are information technology, building maintenance, and vehicle maintenance. Those are services that serve, essentially, it's a service provided internally to all of the departments, and all of the departments pay internal service fees. Information technology is what I've seen gone up the most, and I'll say I did my darndest to keep it as low as I could, but the city is relying, there's truly an increased reliance on technology. Live streaming of the public meetings is just one example. For instance, I had PCD in here, we had some transmission issues earlier this week, and I wanted to make sure that, or last week, and I wanted to really make sure that things were good. So, there's an increased reliance on technology. We're going to be implementing the electronic records policy, and so there's a software we're going to be purchasing for that. I've already brought forward to you a network upgrade that we're in the middle of. Well, next month, I'll be bringing a server upgrade, a server storage upgrade that needs to be done in the IT area. We're also, what's proposed here is an asset management software, which is essentially tracking our infrastructure throughout the city, streets, storm drains, pipes, street trees, that's needed, and the department heads next Thursday will be talking a lot about that. There's also increased vehicle regulations that we need to meet. So you're going to see an increased cost for these items through the internal service funds fees.
May I ask a question about the new building? So with the new City Hall and the structure of it, are we going to see any decreases in expenses in terms of not just energy, but wasn't there also some plans around technology that where the new building was going to be more efficient technologically? And I don't mean energy, but actually, like, was there something there, or am I imagining something?
We won't necessarily see a cost savings, but what we've got is, in each council, in each council, excuse me, conference room, they're going to be linked with a large monitor, and so we've already seen it in a couple meetings. I've already hooked my computer up and been able to present to the screen. They're also going to allow interviews, video conferencing interviews. So it's not necessarily a savings, but an upgrade. And with those upgrades, there's costs, and efficiencies in our processes as well. But yeah, okay. The other thing, the other items that are going up are insurance. We are part of a JPA called REMF, Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. And for many reasons, REMF currently has an unfunded liability in their workman's comp insurance, as well as in their general liability insurance. And with some change in management, and some, bringing some things to their attention, what we're doing is, over the next five years, every REMF city is going to be paying an increased workman's comp insurance amount, and an increased general liability insurance amount. Workman's comp premiums are going up 7.43%, and general liability is going up 32.91% because essentially, we're kind of like, when we look at our fund balance, they have negative fund balances in those two funds on the REMF financial statements. And over the next five years, we're essentially paying higher premiums to make up for that difference. So we're going to see that insurance costs, you're going to see that through the insurance internal service fee, and then the benefit costs for the employees' benefits is where you're going to see the workman's comp insurance increases. And then we've got the increased pension unfunded liability payments.
Can I ask a question real quick before we move on?
Yeah.
On the increased general liability, you said it's going to show up where?
It's, it's, internal service fees. Internal service fees, there's actually, in all of the budgets, there's an insurance. There's an insurance internal service fee.
Okay.
When we get to the general fund, I'll show you where it is.
Okay.
Would it be too much of a distraction to explain why they have such an unfunded liability? That's kind of a dramatic increase.
Agreed.
I think there's been a change of leadership at REMF over the past year and a half, and I think a lot of things are being addressed, which maybe should have been addressed over the past several years. That's probably the nicest way I can put it, but I think with new leadership at REMF, they are addressing a lot of these things, which frankly, were either ignored, unclear why they weren't addressed in previous years, but this is definitely cleaning up some things from the past. That's why you're seeing such a significant number. There's no reason why that number should be negative. Is that the nicest way of putting it?
That's the nicest way.
Do we use SDI at all?
We do. SDI is actually, state disability insurance is actually the insurance that you actually pay as an employee. We, as employers, it's not an employee cost, it's an employee cost.
So SDI is something that's outside of REMF?
Correct.
And then REMF is on top of that?
SDI is state disability insurance, and that is an employee cost, not an employer cost.
Right. I guess my question is, is are we double covering?
Definitely not. Two different coverages.
Okay.
Do we have representation on REMF, or how do we demonstrate that we would like to have more input in the way things are going there?
You have two board members on the REMF board, myself and City Manager McAlion, and actually, it was my input that actually brought some of the matters that are being cleaned up now to the REMF board's attention, because of me looking at the financial statements and starting to ask questions.
Part of the challenge with, not to get too far in the weeds with REMF, part of the challenge, you have a JPA with, what, 13, 13 members? And so if you have an executive director, it's really difficult to move that ship, if you will, when you have so many different members with so many competing interests. And it's hard for me to, well, it's easy for me to say, but I think part of the challenge is, is not all of the different members, we're looking at things with the acute eye that Ms. I Poletti has been over the past couple years, and frankly, previous councils, when Mr. Ziedrich was on council before, he went to one of the meetings, and we had concerns in, which we shared with the board. And so over the years, we've tried to push the board in the right direction, and I think over the past year and a half, two years, they're finally getting a better understanding, I think, with Lorna Park being more involved, with Heather, Ms. I Poletti being more involved. Hopefully, some of these things are getting cleaned up, well, hopefully, they are getting cleaned up by these significant increases. But you can't have a negative, you can't have a negative account, you have to bring it up to par. And all of the, all of the REMF cities are participating in this, so it's not just hitting Heelsburg by 32.9%, it's hitting all the REMF cities by that amount. So my hope is, the other councils are having the same, showing the same concerns, and showing the same questions as this council is with regards to that number.
So is this more of a reset? It's not a continued, every year?
No, this is a five-year reset. So we're going to see this increased cost at the same level for five years.
32%? Well, I mean, it'll shrink a little bit, but...
We did a spike this year.
Uh-huh.
It'll stay the same for five years.
Okay.
And then we should see a decrease after the five years. Okay? The next item is the increased pension unfunded liabilities. This is essentially the item that John Bartel came and spoke to the council about a couple times over the last year. Essentially, pension expense is equal to the normal cost plus the unfunded liability. The normal cost is that ongoing cost, ongoing cost for the current employees. The unfunded liability is any changes that you've made to the plan and included retiree costs that are impacted by interest rate fluctuations and pension funding changes. The unfunded liability portion of the pension expense is increasing $417,000 each year citywide. That's 29% over fiscal year 1718, and 22% over fiscal year 1819. So essentially, some of the things that John Bartel has talked about is already starting with our biennial budget coming up. In early fall, I'll be bringing to council a pension funding policy that Mr. Bartel talked about, and to create a plan to get us through essentially the 20 years of this increasing pension unfunded liability payments. The fifth thing I want to talk about is the increased pension obligation debt payments. In a lot of the funds, at least wherever you see employees budgeted, you'll see debt payments. Those debt payments are to pay off the pension obligation bonds that were issued, I want to say in about 2012. That's to pay off part of that side fund. Mr. Bartel also talks about that. This biennial is the last two years of the safety portion, and the way the bonds were structured these last two years are a little higher than all the other years, and we're going to see an increased amount of 3.2% in that. But again, it's going to affect all funds where there's employees. So these five things, you're going to see, as I'm talking about any budget, all of these things, you'll see, okay, what was that in? And I'll go, okay, remember that, remember those slides when I talked about the changes affecting all budgets? Okay. If there's no further questions, I'm going to get into the details of the proposed general fund budget. I've already lost you. Are we good to go? Okay, thank you. All right. General fund revenue. I'm going to pull out my slides here, so I can leave it at this and talk to you about some of the details here. I want to talk to you about the revenue assumptions while leaving this slide up. Sales tax, we're using the figures from HDL, our sales tax consultant. The revenue is expected to be flat in 1819, and 2% increase in 1920. I say it's going to be flat, but it's going to be similar to the current fiscal year that, remember, is getting that bump from the increased purchases related to the fire disaster. So, it's about a 2% increase in 1920. Property tax, the ROPS residual receipts are expected to remain... Property tax, the ROPS residual receipts are expected to remain flat, similar to this fiscal year, but the Prop 13 property tax revenue is increasing at a rate of about 4% over 17, 18, and 2% over 18, 19. These numbers are considered, very conservative considering the large developments in the city. And what I mean by that is we have, we have a couple, well, probably three properties, a couple that are in process right now of development, a couple that are about ready to kick off development. And as, as those properties are revalued, we're going to see a large bump in property tax, but I'd much rather just budget conservatively and, and bring those back as a mid-year adjustment when those take place. But we, so I'll say that our property tax numbers projected for the biennium are conservative. TOT. TOT revenues are estimated to jump 37% in fiscal year 18, 19. I received estimates from both Harmon Guesthouse and Trio to actually predict those numbers. And then from there, we're estimating an additional 9% in fiscal year 19, 20. Montage Hillsburg is not considered in these estimates. Okay? Development? Please.
Sorry, on TOT. So I know we're getting a huge bump in the TOT and I appreciate the, kind of how you analyzed, how you arrived at the projections, but I'm curious how much further out you've looked for this because I'm concerned that, I mean, just looking on this page, then you hit, there's a, it's a black screen beyond. And I get concerned because down, you know, further, quite a few more pages in, we're going to get into the expense side and there's some things that are being proposed that are directly tied to TOT. And so it, it would help me to have kind of a better understanding of the projections for whether it's montage and then take into account if montage comes on, comes online when they're predicting, what, uh, you know, where we're anticipating the market to be at for overall hospitality vacancy rates and occupancy rates and whether they're going up or down or flattening out because we're in good times now. And I want to, it, it would help to kind of have maybe a, a, a longer horizon, just specific to the TOT and maybe the property tax portion as well. More of a comment.
So if I, if I could jump in?
No, please.
Um, I, I always caution, I would caution council or anybody for that matter, it's kind of the, what's the song they were, whenever you're sitting at the table, especially with the montage and these other, these other hotels, which granted they've, they've broken ground and we anticipate them opening, but we haven't actually seen vertical construction yet. And so it's, it's okay, I guess, to project that. I would just caution us about projecting expenses against any of those. It's, I guess it's nice information to kind of have out there, but with these, but these hotels which haven't actually gone vertical or started going vertical, I would always caution us against doing that. Um, but I think to your point, if I understand correctly, is you just want to get a better sense of what this could look like down the road?
Yeah, and I mentioned montage because that's, you know, they're starting some work on the road, but forget that, just let's stick with what we know today and we have two that are set to open.
Okay.
And some projections beyond the next two years.
I've already done projections beyond the next two years. They're, they're later on in my PowerPoint, I did essentially a five-year projection.
Okay.
But I was, I'll, I'll be honest, I was conservative.
Good.
Okay, it's just my nature. I have a hard time not being conservative. So I'm, I'd much rather have us budget to conservative and then if something come in better during mid-year, we can do a mid-year adjustment and, and bring it in, you know, bring something else in. So you'll see that this budget is, is one that, you know, there were a couple, a couple asks that I, I, I just go, we, we got to stay conservative, we got to stay within our means.
Yeah, I just look at TOT as it's a very volatile, uh, number to rely on. If it, if we're in a drought and there's no snow, then we do well. But if it snows like crazy in Tahoe, where, you know, hotels suffer and, you know, hotels are kind of a luxury item, so when the economy slows down, they're one of the first to take a hit.
I was the finance director for the city during the recession.
Good.
I know that, I know that all too well. And that's one of the reasons why, um, when it comes to revenue projections, I'm going to always go on that conservative side and, and keep expenditures within, within those means.
Good, thank you.
And that's also why, um, last year, or actually two years ago, um, the city manager brought to council a 30% reserve policy that the council adopted. And so that also gives you, and that, that community services fund has a similar policy. And so that also gives us a little buffer and time, I call it kind of like an insurance policy related to time, to give us time to make adjustments, um, when downturns come. Okay?
I just want to mention, I really appreciate the fact that you've been doing this. And I know that this is an old document, but remember these days when we had, and I love this as a framing, how we spend our money as individuals is a direct reflection of what matters to us. This is the same with municipal governments and then it goes on and tries to make it really refrigerator friendly for the populace to know. But I want you to know, you can say whatever you want to us because you are really doing this. So we want to hear what your thoughts are. I don't want you to be censored. I want you to share any values or anything that you want to say because you are doing the numbers and we value that and really appreciate your work. So thank you.
The focus of the numbers will always be conservative. You'll, you'll never see anything else other than that.
And if I could, I don't know if it's actually possible to censor Heather.
I'm going to remember that.
All right, um, next. Development-related permits, a boost in development-related permits is expected in 18, 19 primarily due to, um, Montage Hillsburg annexation fees that are estimated at about 572,000 with more conservative estimates in 19, 20. Again, we may get more development coming in, but development is the first thing to slow down. So I'd much rather see us be conservative in this area and only like, I, I added in the annexation fees because I know we're going to be receiving those. So I brought those in, but as other items come in, they can be incorporated into a mid, a mid-year budget review where I'm going to go conservative otherwise.
To clarify again, so development-related, so that is again, the ones that you had referred to before that are already going off? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Are you talking about like someone that adds something to their house, like an ADU or?
Yeah.
Could be anything to do that the building planning department is?
It could be that or it could be the bigger developments such as montage or, um, the Comstock property, for instance, right? So in 18, 19, you'll see that the number is about almost 1.7, but 500 of that is, is related to montage money that I know is coming in. Other than that, it's similar to the 19, 20 number, which is a little less than what I'm expected this year to end at.
But by even mentioning Comstock, I mean, he doesn't even have an agreement, right?
Right. But that was just one of the projects that are out there in the next two to three years.
Right.
And that's why it's not even taken into consideration is my point, right? So it's, it's, it's just that flat, that flat development-related work. Okay. Charges for services, this is that area where it's got the strike team reimbursements, the successor agency administrative cost reimbursement, as well as the fire service and then some miscellaneous service, um, revenue. Funds and collections, the, the city has seen a 4% increase in revenue, primarily related to a change in accounting related to the parking enforcement revenue. And when I say that, we entered, we changed companies and with that, I got additional information. And so prior to this change in, in companies, we were, we were reporting our parking enforcement revenue as net, net of expenses. Now we're reporting the revenue is gross and the expenses related to the contract down in contracted services. So you're going to see police contracted services go up a little bit and we're seeing the revenue, the parking enforcement revenue go up a little bit for proper accounting. There is a possibility that the, um, with the implementation of the automated license plate reader, that the revenue could go up a little bit, but again, my conservative nature says, let's see what it does. I, I've heard from sources that sometimes it goes up and sometimes it doesn't. So let's see what we get with that before we really, we really take that to the bank. Transfers in, this line includes the funds transferred to the general fund from Measure V to cover public safety positions as well as the payment in lieu of taxes transfer from the electric fund. The payment in lieu of taxes is calculated as 1% of the capitalized deprecial, depreciated assets in the electric fund. And, um, the total Measure V transfer in 18, 19 is 392,000 and 19, 20, it's about 450,471. And we'll talk a little bit further about that later in the presentation, but that's the revenue side of it. A little bit more than, um, the current fiscal year, but again, on the conservative side. You're going to hear that word unfortunately a couple of times before the presentation's over. Okay? All right. If you're, no further questions regarding revenue, I'm going to go to expenditures by department. And we're going to start with the city council. let's see. Wages and benefits, um, that the medical expense is a large portion of it. And that expense changes depending on who's on council, I'll be honest, you know, from a single person to a, to a family, right? The contracted services includes, again, the lavish and the council leadership training. The government fees is RCPA. And then, um, I mentioned before, support of local organizations. That includes the American Legion's fireworks. That amount is reimbursed through the garbage contract. And then the Hillsburg Future Farmers, um, um, support, eight and 9,000. Is there any further questions on the council budget?
Yeah, I have a quick one on the, um, related to some of the, the workshops and training that we do. And so, and we kind of talked a little bit about that. I, I think it's really important, like you went to the, the mayor's meeting and I, I attended the, uh, the June, um, mayors and council, they had a conference down in Monterey. And those are very valuable. So I wanted to kind of get a sense on, and I think for council members, it's really important to go to these things.
Yeah.
And then also for, you know, the, uh, planning commission.
Yep. Um, we've doubled the meetings, travel and training budget, more than doubled it from nine to 19,000 for the council. And, um, um, planning director DeRosa has also put in, um, some money in her meetings, travel and training line for the planning commission.
So when we go to like the league of cities, the local ones, and, you know, we drive down to Petaluma and remember, is that come, when we send in reimbursement, it gets?
Straight out of that line.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So not only that, but when you go to the mayors and council, the new mayors and council members in Sacramento or the leadership one in Monterey or the league meeting, I think this year's done in Long Beach, those would all come out of that. And so I guess the question we've been having is, we typically, when I look at this, I typically look at each councilor going to one per year, but there are times, I think this past year, when councilors went to more than one of those. And sometimes, sometimes you need to. So you could have, uh, a mayor who goes, who's been on council, but goes to new mayors and council members meeting, but also goes to a leadership, the leadership training and then also goes down south to, or goes to the, the state conference, which, which is totally appropriate. So that's, that at times can, can change the budget. So the assumptions change from time to time, but I think based on that, we, um, increased the budget significantly from nine to 19,000 to accommodate all those things and also anticipating some of these trainings, which, um, councils, these, these councils have really been going to, which is, which is a very appropriate because I think it, it provides, um, a lot of information that you normally wouldn't get.
Um, in membership dues, that's ABAG and Lake of California Cities. Okay. There's no further questions on the city manager's budget?
I would like to point out that the printing is pretty low and I like that because I think we all get stuff emailed. Is that what that line is? You have the line for printing and it's $2,000, but nothing going forward because it's pretty much all emailed.
That's, a lot of things are emailed. Sometimes we'll do like the flyer Mayor Manziel has, sometimes we'll, we'll print something like that to hand out. Um, the, um, the finance one that you were holding up? Yeah. Yeah, when we update that, that's something that we would put to printing, but not necessarily to your budget. That would probably come from the finance budget, that one. But that's the sort of thing we do like to have handy, but we do prefer to limit the printing for exactly saved paper.
And just, just to mention it to my fellow council members and certainly not while I'm on council, but I would like to have the conversation at some point regarding this stipend for a city council. I know that that's like, oh my gosh, why would you say that? You know, the medical, I agree, the medical is a great gift, but you know, people don't realize that when you do this job, it's $1,800 a year. And I always thought that there should be more money given to someone that serves on the council. And I've even thought about planning commission and others getting some kind of a stipend, even if it's $30 a meeting. I mean, I just feel like that's something that in this city, you're not going to attract people to come into this job. Maybe there's retirees that want to do it or people that are sitting at this diocese that can afford it, but I know it's been a struggle for me, I'm just going to say. So I would argue that it might be nice to see a little bit more. I'm not saying big bucks, but it turns out to be, I don't know what it is after taxes a month, but it might be nice to see a little more there. So I just bring it up because I've been talking about it for three years and, and I think, I don't want to do it when I'm on, but I think it's something that it would be good to, to look at in the future. So I'm, I'm mentioning it. All right. Thank you for listening.
Okay. All right. I'm going to move on to the city manager's budget. Okay. Oh, actually, let's talk about legal first. Um, this, this line is for the general city legal. It has gone up above our amended budget, above our 16, 17 actual. We, the city manager and I have been talking to our city attorney about ways in which to, um, kind of control our legal costs a bit. So we are optimistically putting out a budget of 310,000 a year, which is a bit less than the current year's expenditures. I'll leave it at that.
What does that mean? That is the salary for the attorney?
I wouldn't call it a salary. That is, that is the, um, every, every time we pick up the phone and call her or have her here, we have to pay an hourly amount.
Right.
To her firm. We do not pay her directly. She, it's a contract, whether, um, whether it's her or another attorney in her office. And, um, we would like to do our best to try to control our legal costs to the best of our ability.
But just looking at it, so I, I guess I'm just trying to understand because there's different models in different cities. So if you have your own attorney, would you be paying him or her more than 310,000 dollars a year? And I understand the general practice analogy and how we have a firm and she can, our present attorney can refer us to a more specialist and she's kind of like, you know, the general attorney. But I guess I'm just questioning, is that pretty much standard? I don't know. Is it about 310 a year for?
It, it, we're getting, we're getting close to what a salary and benefit, fully, a fully loaded salary and benefits would be for, for an in-house attorney. But unfortunate, yeah. Then you'd also have to have those specialty attorneys that would go along with it.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, um, that that's, that time, that 347 isn't just for Ms. Zutler, it's also for the other attorneys in her firm, for those personnel or planning, whatever it may be. And so if you were to take, bring that in-house, you, you usually get a generalist and you're still going to have, so that, so that 300, 300 number, whatever, plus or minus, um, would be your set salary, but you'd still have additional costs for things that may be outside of that, that in-house attorney's purview. So that's why most cities of our size use, or use contracted attorneys. In fact, I think the only ones in some counties that do not are Santa Rosa and Petaluma. And Petaluma recently went in-house, I think within the last three or four years. Um, of course, the county has their own in-house as well.
I have a quick question. So when you're budgeting out, um, for like the 310, and we had this year, the whole gun thing, uh, popped up. So it's not something that you really anticipate from a budget standpoint. So how, how do you anticipate? Do you have just, okay, there's going to be a couple of things that might pop up and we'll allocate X amount?
Every, every year, something pops up. So even in, in 16, 17 and 304, there was something. Okay? Fluoride, thank you. There's always something. We never go a year without there not being something that pops up. The, the big items, any, any water-related or electric-related lawsuits that we've recently been dealing with over the last couple of years, those big things are charged directly to the utility funds related to the lawsuit. So this is your general liability that is, is partially allocated to the funds through the cost allocation plan, but this is your general liability. So I assume that every year, there's going to be something that pops up. And so to me, we, we changed, we changed attorneys in the last year and a half and some of that cost is related to, um, our attorney coming, I'll say, up to speed with, with. Hillsburg's activities. But Hillsburg's active, and so I'll, I'll be discreet and leave it at that.
Well, I, I think it's okay to talk about, because one of the things that some folks maybe don't appreciate is, we are a full-service city, a city of 12,000 people, but because of the complexity of the operation, you know, we, we are different than, than a lot of cities, especially with some of the things we have to deal with, with regards to legal review, and everything, and everything that comes with that operation. So, you know, I think it's, it's something if council wishes to explore, looking at, taking that in-house, I would just caution council if we go down that path, because, again, there are so many unique things that we do in Hillsburg, it would be difficult to find a single attorney who could handle most of those things without having to contract a lot of services, continuing to contract those services out. With regards to the, to what Ms. Iplati said, with regards to the one big thing, yeah, I mean, there's always going to be something that comes up. Guns probably is a bigger thing, but again, we had fluoride a couple of years ago, and that seemed to take a lot of time as well. So it just depends on what those items may be.
My recollection is it wasn't just fluoride, but I understand what your argument is, is that you never know what's going to pop up. But legal is legal. All I'm saying is, if you have a full-time attorney, you have an attorney here every single day of the week, and there's availability issues. And I'm not suggesting that we're not getting coverage, I'm just saying there is an availability issue. So I'm not arguing for getting a in-house attorney. I just was curious about the comparison to other smaller cities, especially like Sonoma Valley, or Sonoma, rather, that has its own attorney. I mean, they, don't they?
They contract, they contract.
Yeah, in fact, all the cities, I think, in Napa.
So just Santa Rosa and?
Santa Rosa, Petaluma.
And Petaluma. Okay, so the larger cities have in-house.
If you look at Napa County, I believe, I'm not even sure if the city.
Okay, it's fine.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming Napa does, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to move on to the city manager's budget. Okay. All right. City's manager's budget, it includes administration, the city clerk, human resources, payroll, community housing with nine existing employees. The HR manager and the housing administrator were added mid-year. No additional positions are being requested. Contracted services include scanning services. We put some money in there for the scanning services as part of that electronic records policy implementation, some public outreach, the beginnings of the strategic plan update, as well as translation. Government fees, fiscal year 1819 proposed is increased by 137%. And that is a number that is provided to us from LAFCO. And what they did is, they calculate it based on our, the, the State Comptroller's report, and they went back to 1516. I guess they're always about three years behind. And they said that our revenue boosted in 1516. I'm going to do some further, further research on that to understand what that bump was, because a quick research did not see a bump, at least not to the extent that they're saying it bumped up, because they're saying it tripled. And I know we received some grant revenue related to the bridge about then, but there's got to be something else in there, and I'm going to do some digging and have a, have a chat with them about that. But as of right now, they're saying the number's going to be the 34767, which is a bump of 137%. Operational expense includes supplies, subscriptions, workshop, workshop expenses. Those are the big items.
Ask a question?
Please.
Yeah. Okay, so going back up to wages and benefits.
Yep.
Proposed 1,469. Okay, so we're adding in this assistant city manager that hasn't been hired, and that person can start at 148 up to 180, right?
Okay, hold on.
Okay, sorry.
Included in, included in the current year, you have an assistant city manager in there. So you're just changing assistant city managers. Okay? So you've got an assistant city manager already in there. What is not in there is the human resources manager. That's brand new. That was added mid-year. What's also included in here is that 3.5% wage increase. What's also included in here is that pension increase, as well as the workman's comp and the medical costs. So, and we went, we did eliminate the deputy clerk position, because when the new clerk is hired, the deputy clerk position will be eliminated. And we did eliminate an office assistant position. And so.
So we eliminated a finance director a while back?
We eliminated a finance director two or three years ago, and you'll see the ad of a finance director when you get to the finance budget, or admin services director.
So the wages and benefits here include what jobs, then?
It includes a, there's no.
For 1819?
Yep. Hold on. There's nine of them. So you've got the city clerk, you've got the city manager, you've got the assistant city manager, you've got a human HR manager, HR specialist, payroll clerk, outreach coordinator. Public, public outreach coordinator, RIA.
Okay.
PIO. Oh, and an admin specialist. Thank you. Got help from my friends. Call home. Sure. All right. Any further questions on the city manager's budget before I move on?
Yeah, real quick on contracted services.
Yep.
That seems to have bounced around, so maybe I missed it, but it looks like going forward, it's consistent at 150. And that's, that included, like, the scanning services, is that?
Okay.
So why the big drop from, I mean, why, why, why is this so high, 342, and then the amended budget of 557?
You've got, this is your general fund portion. In the amended budget included some, the amended budget included some housing contracts that are now funded with Measure S, such as Reach for Home, Housing Land Trust, Walter. I know, I know, yes, thank you, I know Ms. Walter. Excuse me, EPS. Also included in 1718 budget was 54,000 for the bike share program, and we only spent 17,000 of that, because we got the, the sponsors. And then in 1718, there was actually 50,000 for a public outreach, but then we hired the coordinator. And also included in the estimate to close is the 40,000 from Corazon, and any excess of that will carry over into the next fiscal year. Did that answer your question for the most part? Okay. Any further questions before I move on to the next budget? Thank you. Finance. This is where, this is where you've got that admin services director position added? Okay. This includes budget, audit, finance, investments, utility billing, business license, and accounts payable with nine employees. Would you like me to name off those also? Okay. The current year is other employee expenses, the temp agency costs that I mentioned earlier. Administrative services director position was added mid-year. No additional positions were requested. The contracted services current year includes the master fee study and cost allocation plan update. Going forward is audit, investment advisory, the sales tax consultant, and actuarial services for Gatsby 45 and pension. Any further questions on this budget?
Just bank fees. Could you give me a little detail about?
Sure.
What that constitutes bank fees?
Yes. Depending on how much money we leave in our West America, we actually get bank charges. And that includes our Brink's service, as well as what hits this line is also any of the charges we get for the use of credit cards, whether it be for utility billing, payments, or for, like, permits, or even community services charged through here. Any, anytime we, somebody uses a credit card to pay a bill, we get a charge.
But it's like over $10,000 a month. That just seems like a lot.
It's, yeah, agreed. It's, there's, what I've been trying to do is, is take as much money out of our West America account as possible and invest it with our investment advisor. But we're, we're now at the point of, of either looking at another banking service and maybe doing an RFP, or needing to keep money in there to balance our bank fees, because it's the West America. Prior to, prior to me taking on administrative services, the prior director kept a lot of money in there, and we weren't seeing a lot of the bank fees, and that was covering the Brink's service. But now we're seeing the bank fees with me trying to, to improve our investment income, and I think there's a balance that I have now tipped.
Just to clarify.
Please.
It's a lot of money.
I agree.
So my question is, how do you promote? I mean, I understand you're saying something about a deal where you're going to pull the money out and invest it, but are you saying that when someone pays with their credit card at this, at this, so utility, like, so when I use my credit card, that costs the city money?
Of course.
Okay, well, I just wasn't sure. So it could really accrue that fast? I mean, so what does that mean? Like, how much is it costing you to do? I mean, one person does that a month, what is that cost on the city?
There, there's a, it depends on the amount of the amount that you charge.
$80.
It's a certain percentage.
Okay. Who knows? It could be eight bucks for $80.
It's, I want to say it's like a half a percent or something like that. I don't know what it is offhand.
So then, but it's not about our employees using bank cards?
No.
It's about the bank fees for having a service that allows people to use a credit card?
Correct. As well as the, the bank fees that our, our current bank charges us for just using their banking services, such as Brink's and other services.
Okay.
Okay. Planning and building. And I'm going to invite Director DeRosa to come up here, and I'm going to go over her budget just on the surface, and then if you have any questions, I want to give her the opportunity to answer the questions. This department includes planning and building inspection with 10 existing employees. A senior building inspector was added mid-year with no additional positions requested. The contracted services includes plan check services, geological, geologist peer review, geotechnical engineer peer review services, and implementation services for expanded use of intergov software focusing on the citizen access portal module. Meeting, travel, and training is included for the planning commission, as mentioned earlier, and included in their internal service fees. That, the internal service and replacement fees is your, your IT service fees, your vehicle maintenance and replacement, and they do have a vehicle in the fleet, as well as rent costs and utilities for the building facility. So in 1920, we are looking to replace a 2001 Ford truck. And if you have any further questions, I'm going to let Director DeRosa answer. It's called the hot seat. She's first.
Do you need another planner? What's going on? Your building department is hopping, so I know you're not supposed to say exactly what you need now, because it's been written down on a piece of paper, given to us in categories, but you seem very busy, your department.
Well, you know, I appreciate our very generous city manager, who has been tremendous in saying, you know, fortunately, I have a very good lead of contract planners, as you know. We've had a lot of people come up here and present things both to the council and the planning commission. And so that's actually been a really great way to, you know, help bridge the gap between a specific project, a very complex project, like the Mill District, and have those costs fully recovered. We did include a little bit of budget in this next fiscal year for some contracted planning services, but you know, like, development in the economy, there's an ebb and flow of how that goes. And so at this point, we didn't feel was warranted to have a full-time staff position, and we feel with access to contracted services that we should be able to manage the next year to do well, but we will definitely revisit that, and I'm in frequent conversations with him about how resources are, and I appreciate the support very much. Thank you.
We still do send some of the plans down to that same organization in San Diego?
Escal, yes. And that's part of our contracted services, as it was last year as well.
And as far as customer satisfaction, that's going pretty well. To send it down there and have them vet things and turn around and all that, it's just what I hear sometimes, is like, oh, they send it somewhere else. That's just going to, that's been happening for a couple of years, where we use that service?
Yeah, and they provide a very good expertise. They have structural engineers, so a very complex project actually will navigate through there faster than if we did it ourselves. So.
Any further questions for Director DeRosa before I go to the police budget and bring up somebody else into the hot seat?
Thank you, Maya.
Chief Burke, welcome.
All right. The police department includes public safety, dispatch, and code compliance with 26 existing employees. Please don't ask me to name off all 26. No additional staff is proposed. Currently, one police officer position and one dispatcher position are funded with Measure V. Acquisition of an automated license plate reader to enhance the parking enforcement program, and the continuance of the youth diversion program are, are what Chief Burke continues, considers the highlights. And the youth diversion program was started last fiscal year with one-time grant seed money.
So, any further questions for Chief Burke? Come on, guys.
Of course.
Parking enforcement officer. As you know, it's listed on our city website as a part-time temporary seasonal position, and it's a code enforcement officer of $31 to $40 an hour. So are we going to be upping that, or do we need, not, not in terms of cost, but I mean, are we going to be, we're going to be using that code enforcement officer more? Or do we have a need to maybe buck that up a little bit in light of what's going on with vacation rentals, or? I know, you know this, chief, I'm concerned about.
Of course.
And I just wondered if you need more hours, or if you're satisfied, just curious.
Our code enforcement officer seems to be meeting our needs as a part-time employee currently, particularly because council's been kind enough to allow us to contract with those services that really go out there and scour the internet for listings. And so what we're finding is a lot of the listings that are reported to us, we've already looked at, and we did explore an additional option, another provider of that, to ensure we were getting the best available information that's out there, and we think that our current host compliance, which is our current vendor, is doing a pretty good job of getting us the information we need. There's always going to be, it's law laws, there's a lot of money to be made in vacation rentals. So it's a kind of a cat and mouse game that we continue to play, but I think the amount of hours that he's working seems to be meeting, meeting our needs. And of course, he does a lot of other things besides vacation rental enforcement as well.
So do we need to up the fees? That when someone does get caught, should we up the fees? What is the current fee? It's always, people ask me this all the time.
It's $750 per violation, but that.
They get a warning, though, right?
They do, unless we've been in touch with them before, and they're clearly aware of it, and been warned previously, then we do like to, if we have any, any indication that they might not be aware of our ordinance, because in a lot of communities, you can have vacation rentals. And then we, I think the fine is, is pretty good. It seems, it continues to accrue at a daily rate, too.
Does it, does it even out to the pay for this code enforcement officer?
No, I don't think so.
So we're definitely spending money to have that person there, but it's, it's not like the fees that we're collecting for code enforcement. You know, sometimes you can see that.
Sure.
Connection, but we're not seeing that for that particular code enforcement.
It's easier to see that with parking enforcement, where the fines are more consistent. The fines with code enforcement are much more sporadic. Of course.
All right. If there's no other further questions for Chief Burke?
And thank you for. And thank you for funding that diversion program. It's a great program, so I really appreciate that and city manager's support as well on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Chief Boaz, your turn. All right.
Fire. The fire department includes fire suppression, prevention, hazardous material compliance with 13 existing employees and an active reserve program. Currently, one firefighter position is funded with Measure V funds. An additional firefighter funded with Measure V funds is proposed. Redcom dispatch fees increased by over 3%. Strike team reimbursements are not included in the expense side of the budget. And so as strike team activity increases, you'll see the bump in the wages and benefits as we saw in the current fiscal year.
So. Any questions for Chief Boaz? Thank you, Chief Boaz.
You're welcome. No questions?
I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I think I'm the only, it's okay.
Now's your opportunity.
Thank you. I'm, have an interest in everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
It got easy. All right, that was too easy, guys. All right, non-departmental. We've got the insurance bump that we talked about earlier. I went ahead and broke out the transfers out. What we do is the, the pilot or the payment in lieu of taxes that we receive from the electric fund, we, we bring it in as a transfer in. And then the last year and what's proposed for the next couple of years is to transfer it out and put it into the streets fund to support the street operations and the, the repair and maintenance of our streets that is related to the work that the electric department does. And then also you've got the transfer out to the debt fund. That is the, the funds related to fund the pension obligation bond that I mentioned. And then you've got the overhead allocation or general and administrative allocation. That's the costs that essentially the other funds, the utility funds, pay to pay for the services that the general fund departments provide them, such as paying for their payroll, their HR services, the city manager's oversight, other finance services, and that basic legal costs. And how, how we spread those costs is through the cost allocation plan. And included in the finance department's current year expenditures was an update of that cost allocation plan to make sure if we're ever questioned by the public, that we have an impartial, defendable plan on how we allocate our, our overhead costs. So you'll see a line item in their budgets for overhead allocation. And this is where you see it offset our expenditures, is in the non-departmental area. So if there's no further questions, I'll move on.
May I check in with the public in terms of public comment for just the items so far? Or would that be all right, protocol-wise, instead of waiting to the very end? So just to clarify, the public comments on non-agenda items did say members of the public will have an opportunity to address concerning any items listed on the special meeting agenda at the time when the item is considered. There's been a lot of consideration. So if anyone's here to speak on a particular item, I'd like to invite you to come up. I don't know if you have the, if you've been following with this, but you're invited to come up and ask questions. Or if you want to make any commentary, this would be a good time, I think. So would anyone like to ask any questions from the public? You're invited. We'll open public comment up. Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Tim Unger, Plaza Street. Just a couple of questions on legal. Curious what that average hourly rate is when you bake in travel and hotel time? And how many hours does that actually calculate being paid for? If the average hourly rate were $400 an hour, which isn't an unusual, fully loaded rate for a contract attorney, that's about 900 hours, which is less than a half a year's worth of a full-time individual. And then I see that payroll seems to be a little less year to year for fire. I'm kind of curious why it's down. I might have missed the explanation, but I didn't quite follow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll just make note of the questions. And again, we'll address them after we hear from others that maybe want to make a public comment or ask a question. You're welcome to come up. Otherwise, we'll proceed with the next item. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? Okay. All right, I will close public comment and go back to the report.
Let me answer Mr. Unger's couple of questions. Pretty easy. The average legal cost for legal per their contract is about $220 an hour. And it's for multiple attorneys. And it really does depend, but the average I'd say is about 220. Fire salaries and wages goes up and down because of strike team reimbursements. Fiscal year 17, 18 had a lot of it, and that's why you saw a bump. And then I don't budget for strike team reimbursements. So it all depends on the amount of activity.
And just to clarify the legal, because different attorney specialties, the rates vary to some degree. So if we're using our primary city attorney to review an item, I believe the rate is 220. However, if there's other items which are beyond more of a specialty legal piece, if you want to call it that, then the rate typically goes up. With regards to travel, of course, she does charge for travel. But I believe recently that the firm picked up the overnight for council meetings. So.
Okay. Hotel expense?
Yes.
So once again, just looking at the 310, so dividing that in, I'm not good, I'm not good at this division stuff, so you might have to help me. But so just the, the point is, is the 220 or more, I don't know, just interesting. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. I have a little, a little graph here where I, very conservative going forward with revenue and fairly conservative with expenses. I assumed a 3.5 increase in salaries and wages in 20, 21, 21, and 22, and 22, 23, with 7% in benefits, the large expenses. But you'll see that, that revenue is, is tracking with expense. And you're seeing the unrestricted fund balance going down a bit. But through the five years, we are continuing to meet our reserve requirement of 30% of annual operating expense. And so I'd say with conservative budgeting in both expense and revenue, we, we are still meeting our reserve policy, but it is tight.
And just to kind of clarify, as we talked about not projecting projects which haven't come to fruition yet, we do know that Trio and that, what's the other one? H3, Harmon House, thank you. You know, the valuations for that will increase over the next year or two. And so we'll see property tax revenues come from those. And we do also know when montage hits, again, hasn't, haven't gone vertical yet, but we'll see a significant increase in property tax valuation from that project as well. Not, this is separate and apart from TOT.
Okay, all right. That's your general fund, fund balance analysis. Okay, this is, this is what I really look at closely. At the end of fiscal year 1920, we're expecting an unrestricted, unreserved policy, fund balance of $738,380. That's above our 30% reserve policy of annual expenditures. So we've got 3.8 set aside in the pension stabilization fund as of 1920, and the 4, the 4.1 in the reserve policy. So that's in excess of 60% set aside in reserves. Again, I believe we'd be the envy of any Sonoma County city. And so I like how our numbers look. I think we're good going forward, as long as we continue to stay on a conservative path. My, my opinions.
I, I think that this is a really strong budget and, and, you know, especially with those kind of reserve numbers, you know, it's just going to make for a real consistent, predictable budget going forward. So I, good work on the, on this fund. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
I would want to add a little piece of caution. We're going to talk about this a little bit. But we do have four positions for Measure V, which are currently in budgeted Measure V for safety positions. Thank you. So she's right ahead of me as usual. You know, if those, if something isn't, we don't do something with Measure V and those, those numbers, those about 450 hits the general fund, if you go back to that previous slide, Heather, then if you go to 1920, I mean, you're going to see a negative number and we'd be, we would be potentially getting into unrestricted reserves over time. And so I think it's important for council just to recognize that, that we will need to address that before 2023, I think is when Measure V expires.
Didn't we have that as one of our adopted goals?
It is. We will be, one of the goals is to look at a report card for Measure V. But again, beyond that, we, I think council will have to, we have to come up with a plan, either get rid of the sunset, extend the sunset, or come up with Plan B with regards to what we do with that. Because we do, it's not just, it's not just public safety we have in there. We also rely on that for our street improvements, economic development with the chamber, and facility improvements as well. So I think, again, I just want to go back to the next slide. Sorry, Heather. Reiterate that, that, that is a concern of mine with regards to those, those positions. Then of course, the pension liabilities, which you're probably tired of listening to concerns about, but that is a real concern moving forward. And again, if you go back to the previous slide, you take a look at that pension stabilization fund of $3.8 million, you know, if, if we didn't have to have that, if the pension situation wasn't as it is, that's $3.8 million we could be spending on something else. But because of, we do know that, because we do know it's an outlying problem, we're doing the right thing by creating that, that fund. Do I need to add yet to that, Heather?
Nope, you've got it. And I'll, just a reminder, second time tonight, sorry. Can't help it because I think it's very important. Staff will be returning to council in the fall to present a funding policy for the pension liabilities and a plan going forward. Okay, all right. That is it for the general fund. So I'm going to start the community services fund?
May I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
If the city just pretend, imagine that this council or a, a council to come wanted to actually put money into something creative, like match some housing funds to create some housing for people that we feel we want to support. I know we have Measure S, and I know that we, you know, that's a pot of money. But I'm just wondering, where would that money come from? Which category?
You've got, you've got Measure S, you've got some inclusionary housing funds, and your only other, well, you've got a housing agency fund, but there's no balance in that. It's essentially an unfunded fund at this point with, with the, what I call the 20% set asides with redevelopment gone. That, the funding source for that fund is gone. And you've essentially got an unfunded mandate by keeping, protecting the housing that the RDA set aside without any funding source other than Measure S or in lieu. But the only other funding source for what you're defining is the general fund. So it would have to come from that unreserved, unfunded, I mean, unappropriated fund balance.
And so with the approval of the general fund the way it is, there's no tweaking that in the next two years for future councils?
Oh, there, of course there is.
So there's always flex, right? Even though you're doing a two-year budget, a future council could come in and say, we value housing, and we're going to go ahead and decide to put some money towards something that is on city-owned land and we can take that at a general fund.
You, you would, there, there's no other funding source in the, in, in the city funds for it other than the general fund. The general fund, as I discussed a couple months ago when I did that mid-year and presented those graphs, the, the, when you look at all of the funds, the general fund has, has the most discretionary funds. All the other funds are an enterprise fund or a special revenue fund, and very restricted on how you can spend the money. And the general fund has its, has its, has its purpose also. You've got public safety in there, you've got administration in there. But, but it's the only fund that you have the discretion to, to use it for housing.
Just a couple of comments. I, I do want to reiterate that I, I would like to revisit Measure S and how those allocations are, you know, there's some things that got shifted out of the city manager's budget over to Measure S. And I, I would like to have a deeper discussion about what is appropriate to be paid out of Measure S based on the ballot language, the intent. So it's not, you know, so we're not just throwing everything in there. And then the second thing is, I like that you brought up the, working on moving the positions out of Measure V, because I would like it if Measure V was being pitched as this is infrastructure improvements, improving the roads, sidewalks, everything else. And just based on the TOT increase, and the general fund is $307,000 over the next two years. So not that I'm trying to take things away, but you know, maybe the, we do focus on the increase in the TOT as a potential location of where we can start shifting some of the costs of those salary positions over.
Well, I, I would caution that because we only have 2% to play with in the general fund for TOT. And so the challenge is going to be as, as other, other expenses increase, that 2% of the TOT is going to have to be spread out amongst other things as well, not just that $450,000 which we talked about for those four positions. So I think just relying on that to cover would be, would be challenging. If we took a look at other revenue sources or other revenues out there, if there's something other than Measure V, that would be a good, a good conversation to have. But I would just caution council on trying to pick up those, those expenses with just that 2%, especially over the next several years.
Find out where I could, where can I find out how many city employees we actually have? And I, I don't mean the seasonal, but how many employees do we actually have in the city of Hillsburg that are full-time?
I think the last count was 135.
135? Okay. And that's somewhere on the website or no?
No, but it'll be in the budget document.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Sure.
That, that could be wrong, but Heather was.
I was going to say.
And city manager, just real quick, this is a 2014, 2015 document, as you know. At this time, we had a budget of 62 million. What's our budget now?
Last I checked, it was closer to 80, I want to say. But a lot of it has to do with capital projects. So.
Yeah.
For instance, if, the year we had the bridge hit, hit the, hit the budget, I think we were at 84 million, if I want to say, I won't look back. But if the bridge wasn't in, you'd take that $12 million revenue out. So it depends on some of the capital projects which we have in the budget. Sure.
Yeah, we're not in the hot seat up here. We're in the cold seats. We're going to have to start.
For the current fiscal year, there's 138 approved full-time positions. And there are some positions proposed for the current biennium. And so it would go from 138 to 146 with what's proposed. Full-time positions only. It got quiet.
The air is off now. Thank you, city manager.
All right.
Moving on to community services.
Okay. Proposed budgets for community services. Community services includes their, what I'll call their operations fund, as well as their project fund. So I, part of me wants to just let Mark do his own slides, but I'm going to, I'm going to go for it. Community services includes recreation, parks, trails, and open space, senior services, after-school programs, swim center, arts and culture, community center, and special events. Mark's looking to use additional proposed revenue as new service areas to expand what he's looking to do, offer more services. And that includes a volunteer program for transportation for older adults, special needs programming, roundabout maintenance, an arts and culture plan, a banner program replacement, PEG operations, and including the videotaping of commissions, development, park fee study, downtown, expanding the downtown holiday decor, open space management, and open space enforcement, a couple of those being one-time expenses. TOT revenue is proposed to increase. As I mentioned earlier, Hotel Trio and Harmon Guest House have provided us their projections for the next two years. And Mr. Thiemig's goal is to invest those proceeds in new services, add capacity, and expanded capital project funding. He is meeting, or as proposed, he is meeting his council set reserve requirement of 30% of annual operating expenditures. of 30% of annual operating expenditures. The building maintenance upgrades includes the keyless entry and video surveillance. The vehicle replacements proposed over a two-year period is the replacing of three 2001 trucks and the purchase of a trailer and a mule. And regarding his staffing, he's got 11 existing positions, and he's proposing three additional positions. The three additional positions includes a volunteer coordinator, a park foreman, and a recreation manager. The volunteer coordinator will coordinate the volunteer program and transportation program for the older adults, and their position will be at the the senior center. The park foreman is essentially adding a maintenance worker to the parks team. It moves the city forward towards a five-park maintenance worker plan, as identified in the Parks and Open Space Plan, allows increased focus on turf and landscape maintenance. It removes the superintendent from day-to-day work and and focus on project planning and delivery, and oversees and assists with special projects, where the recreation manager, originally proposed as an administrative analyst, would provide greater leadership for program and service enhancement and development, and oversee or assist with special projects to help address capacity issues and moving projects forward more timely. Okay, we've got the community services fund revenue. Before I get into the details of that, do you have any questions about the proposed positions? No, not yet. All right. The TOT revenue is revenue that I calculated. The rest of the revenue, Mr. Thiemig calculated, and so I'm going to, I'm going to let him say anything he needs to say or to answer any questions.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. So we're fortunate, of course, to benefit from the TOT and invest those proceeds directly back into our operations and services for the community. So you notice that our program revenue costs, our revenue for our programs and services aren't projected to increase significantly. That's because we're utilizing those new new TOT dollars to reinvest right back into the community. We are seeing some program growth as it relates to recreation programs moving forward. And the other areas, they're fairly stable in terms of growth because we're we're using the new revenue to offset additional costs associated with those, like the volunteer program. That's not a revenue generating program. It's a service program.
Any questions here on the community services revenue?
Yeah, I see that there's three positions to be added. And if we look at the estimate to close to the proposed budget on wages, there's over $400,000 in increases there.
You've got.
Am I reading that right?
Okay, you've got, the wages line would automatically include, in addition to the three positions, it would also automatically include the 3.5%.
Just to clarify, I think, if you don't mind if I clarify, recreation manager, so on our, I mean, I'm just wondering, are these, this is, a recreation manager makes $101,000 a year?
All all new positions are assumed at step C. They're assumed at step C, and they're also assumed at full medical benefits for family.
Okay, so it's about $8,000 a month. Okay. I was just trying to figure out how much that was going to cost. And then the park lead foreman, I know I've been hearing about that for a long time. I don't, I'm just wondering how, because that's how it breaks down, I think, of salaries. Okay.
Okay, all right.
This is the cost.
All right. Any further questions on revenue before we dive into the expenditures?
The line on a donation, so we had an unusual amount of donations for this year relative to what we're projecting. What's what's that about?
Madam, madam, mayor, members of the council, that was actually for 2016-17. And that was the bequest that we received for the senior center that went towards remodeling the dining room.
Okay.
Actually, I have quick questions, sorry, on the grant proceeds. So when we were talking about Fitch Mountain, I'd asked the question about, you know, who's applying for the grants and that sort of thing. So you have, that's one number that kind of jumps up and down, 190, 134, 193, then 166, and then 166. So are there specific things that you're anticipating, kind of a recurring grant request as opposed to, you know, like Fitch Mountain, there's, oh, here's a chunk?
Very good question. So the grant proceeds in prior years included the ACES program, the after-school program, that's technically a grant program from the state that's a pass-through to the school district, to us, to provide that program. And then it also included funding from the open space district for the operations of Heelsburg Ridge, as well as Fitch Mountain. Some of the dollars went into the capital fund, some of the dollars went into the operational fund. With the upcoming transfer of the ridge to the city, that grant, those grant proceeds go away. They were actually paying for a portion of that maintenance cost. So you'll see those costs being reflected in the expenditure side as well. Project grants, like if we apply for an open space matching grant program for park development or acquisition, that would actually go into the capital fund. And you'll see that coming up when we do, at your next meeting, we'll have a request for, to submit a grant application for park development funding.
So would the volunteer coordinator be mid-management level?
Madam, mayor, members of council, that's actually, I think, an IBW, so that's the equivalent of a recreation coordinator level.
Okay, and the same with the park lead foreman?
Correct.
Okay, it's just the rec manager job is definitely mid-management.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. If if there's no further questions, we'll go on to more detailed expense. I have the expense by type as well as program. And I'm gonna, any questions on the by type? I know there were some questions on the by program, but.
Just once again, so if we wanted to put money into the community services center up north, okay?
Yep.
That's not coming out of this.
It would.
It would. This is not capital improvement.
Ah, we have a capital, a community services capital fund, but the funding source would need to come from this. We would transfer money into that fund for this. So the funding source would be this fund.
At the end, you'll be able to see what the reserve is in that. And so that would be probably the number which you'd want to put towards any project. So after Dr. Thiemig goes through his capital, goes through his budget, presents his capital projects, you'll also see an unrestricted reserve in there, which I think is around $800, $900,000. That number would be, if my memory serves me correctly, that number would be the number you'd want to talk about with regards to focusing on a specific project related to community services. And again, you still have the general fund, which is really an expenditure which council can move move those monies around almost anywhere, frankly.
So, mayor, members of council, I can kind of highlight a few of these larger, more significant changes if that would be helpful on this on this sheet, and then they're reflected as well on the next next page as well. So as we talked about, the the labor expenses, wages, overtime, and benefits, that's the three full-time positions. It also includes funding for part-time open space enforcement. We had another model that we're not quite ready to roll out yet, and yet in collaboration with the police department to do a Parks and Foot Patrol Officer. We hope someday we'll be able to do that. We included funding for special needs programming. We currently worked really closely the last year or two with the Rotary on the Rotary Cares Program. And I think it's a really great opportunity for us to segue into more involvement in special needs programming. And then there's this overall part-time increases in terms of our additional special events that are reflected in those personnel costs as well. On the IT and information services, that includes IT upgrades, and then moving into an asset management program as as Ms. Ippoliti mentioned. Video surveillance and keyless entries included in the building maintenance service fees. The PEG operations, the public education and government channel operations are included in supportive local organization. The contracted services, that increased significantly, that included, that includes our increase in open space management, the arts and culture plan that we talked about previously, the roundabout maintenance, the park fee study, and then holiday decor. Moving further down on the on the list, the operational expenses include the volunteer programming, special needs programming, and then just miscellaneous operational expenses. And then the administrative overhead is the the GNA allocation that we pay for the services that we receive. The very bottom line, that's a modest transfer into capital of $250,000 in the second biennial, or second biennium. We'll be able to talk a little bit more about that when we get into the capital plan or capital improvement program.
A quick question on the, going back to the wages and the and the new positions. So I understand the Parks and Rec, what you're overseeing is going to be growing substantially in the next couple of years. You've got Fitch Mountain, you've got Saggio Hills, some of these other things. What are you looking at, and again, I keep going past the two years, but it does help me to understand, you know, when's the next ask? Like, is this going to, is this giving you a slightly running head start? So by the time those positions are in, you're ready to absorb in the additional real estate that you're now going to be managing and taking care of? Or is this, do you anticipate another ask coming once these come along? And I know it's a little speculative, but I'd like to kind of get a sense from you.
No, it's really good. As a team, we sat down and we've looked towards the future. We believe that we're covering our open spaces adequately within this budget with the increased funding for Landpass, who's our partner in open space management as well. The the parks foreman will really set the framework for the parks maintenance division. It's a little difficult to say because the final plan for Saggio Hills is not final. There's concepts that are out there. If it's a more active-use facility, it's certainly going to be require more maintenance than what we have capacity for right now. If it ends up being more natural resource-based and more passive in nature, we can likely absorb a lot of that into our current operations. On the recreation side, I think we're staffed really well. The recreation manager is important for us because I did a list of, we have 25 projects right now that are outside of the day-to-day work. And so that will help me, because a lot of these are getting backlog backlog on my desk. So that will help me move that forward, as well as providing overall kind of vision and direction for the whole recreation function. We've also looked at our special events. We're doing 11 new special events that we weren't doing two years ago. Those take significant amount of time, whether it's Art After Dark, or working collaboratively with the Heelsburg Center for the Arts on the Arts Festival that'll happen this summer. There's a lot of new activity, a lot of things that are happening that are being either sponsored by the city directly or co-sponsored with one of our local organizations who we like to work with really closely because they do great things that we may not be as good at.
So if I could add, I think the community services department has been working very lean for a number of years. Part of that has to do with their funding mechanism with TOT. As you remember back when the recession hit, you know, when when the recession hits, the TOT drops relatively quickly, whereas sales tax, property tax, they drop much more gradually. And so you're able to recover more. So I think from that, the community services department has had to be very lean. I think when you take a look at what's on the horizon for the department, it's really exciting. I think leadership that's in place is going to be able to carry that forward. I think what Director Thiemig really needs right now is somebody to get him out of the weeds. And I think that's where that recreation manager position really comes in, and he can alleviate some of the day-to-day things which he's doing and really operate, really kind of, I like to say, up on the balcony rather than the dance floor. But I think as you see the montage come on, depending what happens with replay, depending what happens across the street from the montage at Comstock, and everything that's happening throughout throughout the city with more opportunities, I think you're going to see more need with regards to maintenance. I think that's one of the areas which is identified in the master plans, which is really lacking. I think his staff is doing an amazing job with the resources they have. But I think you're going to see additional challenges that moving forward. But I think you're starting to see really what this department really should, how it should be staffed based on where those revenues are. I think with the TOT revenues being able to kind of hopefully expand over the next few years, I think you're going to see that department really be staffed as really it probably should have been for a number of years. So I credit Director Thiemig for being able to come up with a plan that addresses that.
I just want to add too, just on piggyback on that, thank you. I concur. It's definitely a different culture that the community services, I mean, it's just been, there's a lot of new, exciting aspects. One thing that I keep putting on our on our city council goals for the last three years is looking at Villa Santa Clara, and really looking at these contracts that we have with Tame Incorporated, including the golf course. And I just, I have concerns about the city owning these properties, but then we don't have any, I mean, I know that they collaborate with us. So we've got $50,000 we're going to spend in 2018, 2019 for maintenance. Why do we have to pay anything? I mean, aren't they our tenants? Don't they have to take care of this? I mean, they are getting it for how much a year? How much money do they make? Do we ever know how much they make? I mean, I'm just curious. I know, I just want to know what we're getting, and nothing against the corporation, but, you know, we've had problems on the golf course. I just want to know what we're getting out of that relationship because we've signed up a 40-year contract with them, right?
So there's two different agreements. There is a golf course agreement, and they basically have 100% of the responsibility at the golf course. Even though we own the assets, we own the irrigation system, we own the facilities, they have 100% responsibility for the golf course operations. And they've made improvements, capital improvements at the golf course over time, like the irrigation upgrades that they did a couple of years ago, they obviously remodeled, and they've really invested those dollars. The villa is a little bit different. We still have some responsibility related to the capital cost for the the structure. It's spelled out in a lot of detail in the agreement. They're responsible for the day-to-day operations and then certain parts of the facility. The city's still ultimately responsible for the actual capital assets. There's terms within the agreement that set money aside into a capital fund when they hit a certain revenue threshold. So once they hit a certain amount of revenue, then that money goes into a capital fund. They haven't hit that number yet, but they're moving in that direction.
You're suggesting that they're not making a profit enough to be able to, I mean, we find out every year, city manager, how much they're making? Because I thought that's what I was told when I first got on council, I asked that question.
As Dr. Thiemig knows, as part of the agreement, we audit their books on an annual basis. I think anything over 300,000, they get the first 300,000, I want to say. Then anything after that, we, it flips and we get, I want to say, a larger percentage of that. Could you elaborate?
Yeah, there's a percentage over the 300,000 that goes into into a designated capital fund that we pay for long-term operating costs. They haven't hit that number yet. We spent a lot of time in the last year looking at, because their agreement's going to come to an end in 2019, so it even needs to be renewed.
They come to an end in 2019?
2019, it's a five-year agreement. And so they provide a lot of of benefits in operating that in terms of being able to negotiate with renters that the city can't do because of our fixed-fee schedules and things like that. They're a good partner up there. I know there have been some frustrations from the school district in the past, but I think some of those were misunderstandings, and also some things that were just happening with the staff who were there. But but I really think they provide a great service, and they're a really good partner. Ultimately, it's the city's infrastructure to maintain. And so we want to work closely with them and collaboratively with them to make sure we're both successful.
Sorry, real quick, on support of local organizations at $40,000, can you just expand on that?
Sure. So the the city has has a opportunity or has the the PEG channels that this that are provided through Comcast, so public, education, and government. So when these meetings are put out on the cable system, they run on one of those channels. In the past, there's been an arrangement with Access Heelsburg to essentially program those on behalf of the city. They work closely with John Chevalier, who's also a high school teacher. So we're in the process of working with Access Heelsburg and the school district to transition the operation of the PEG channels over to the district to be a student-run TV station. It's a really cool concept. There's not many of those in California. And basically, what this would do is this would provide the funding to make that happen. There's two different classes that are associated with it. There is an advanced video production class that's associated with it. And then there's also what's a new section called, I think it's broadcast television, where they're actually programming the classes. They're going to, they have plans to brand it. We'll be coming back to council with a better framework for this. So that's what those $40,000 are. There's also an obligation on the city's behalf to fund a portion of those that's related to the purchase of the community center from several years ago.
I had hoped that was also included, you know, we'd talked to council when we, you know, did the 25,000 for Heelsburg Jazz about, you know, maybe there should be some kind of a community benefit program that people are going to apply for that covers different types of art programs, or concert series, or whatever that's a community benefit. So just wanted to kind of put that out there. I'd like to see something like that, whether it's a percentage of what you get from the TOT that's just allocated toward that so that every year there's a, you know, maybe the Parks and Rec hears proposals and, you know, pulls it out.
Mayor, members of council, I think the arts and culture Mayor, Members of Council, I think the arts and culture is right on the tip of being a really integral part of the community. It's around us right now. And part of what the goal with the arts and culture plan that's in the budget is to try to identify how those, what would be that dollar amount? And then how would those be allocated amongst the different arts organizations? So it's not currently in the budget. The arts and culture plan is, but we have a placeholder sitting out there that as we do that planning process, we make sure we answer that question. And then we come back to the council so you can make a really educated decision based on all the input from the different organizations and the community as a whole.
And my input would be before you make a negotiation or a contract rather with the villa, that you really re-see, like, look back and be reflective on what the gains have been. Because I've heard numerous times from other people, not just the school district, that they feel like they haven't had access to it the way we used to have it, where people could go up there and have more weddings and it was, it was less expensive for the citizens. And maybe that's romanticizing the past, but I would like to have that looked at. City Manager, I know you were in the position to maybe look at those days when Elizabeth Haskell was here and there was, there was all this trying to get the city to be able to hang on to the villa and be the one that actually does all the organizing up there. And they did a marketing thing, I remember that when I was living here. And I just don't know what our gain is. I'm certainly not suggesting we should take that on, but if you're going to get some new positions, I'm just suggesting it might be a good thing to look at the villa as a potential moneymaker for the city rather than a, I don't know, I'm not sure. But I want you to be creative. I'm not giving, that's just my input. Had to say it because it's been online.
I think that's something we can definitely look. I will echo though what Director Thiemig said, and also having gone through that process for many years, the challenge we have is we're not as nimble as the private sector. So if we want to change rate, change, it'd be like this. So let's say somebody comes in in three weeks, they want to rent out the villa, and somebody wants to discount that rate because we have an open date. In the private sector, they can discount that rate to X percentage, whatever it is to fill that bed or fill that event. For us, we don't have that ability to, we have to come back to council, adjust the rate, and do all those different types of things. So I think there's some nimbleness, if that makes sense, with regards to having an outside contractor utilize it. But nevertheless, we would definitely, when the contract is up, I'm sure Director Thiemig will review the contract, take a look at what's in the best interest of the city, make those recommendations to myself and council.
The main thing is the citizens of this, of this town want access up there. So if you haven't heard that, maybe you haven't, but I've heard it where they don't feel like, I used to go to weddings up there a lot more frequently and people just can't get in there. Maybe it's gone up in price because it is private. I don't know. All I know is they don't feel like it's their area as much and just giving you some input on it. So just something to consider.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move to the expense by program slide, see if you have any expenses questions there. Some of this expensive have increased. And so I think Mark has answered most of the questions, but anything specific by program?
Senior Services, it doubles. What causes that?
Correct. So first of all, it's a relatively small portion of our budget already. That includes the volunteer program and the staffing associated with that. So collectively, that's about $120,000, $130,000. There's new excursions that are part of our program as well. Those are expenses, but then there's fees that offset those expenses. And then just the expanded programming that Active Adult and Senior Services Supervisor Anna Grant has started. You probably saw on Friday's update, there were a number of Saturday events. We're really trying to program the facility more. It's a prime facility located downtown, and we want to make sure that we're using it as much as possible. So those are the primary areas. There's also overhead that's spread across all of our divisions. So that IT increase that we talked about previously and that Ms. I Paletti mentioned, the service fee increases, and then just general G and A allocation, those get spread across each one of our different program areas.
There's no further expense questions, I'll move on.
I just had a quick one. We're talking about, you see, if you look at the recreation programs, line item there, the 17, 18 estimate to close, it looks like that that item actually goes down for the proposed budget?
Correct. I mean, this is the expenditure side, and I apologize, I don't have the detail on that other than, we did reallocate some salaries across divisions. So for example, a portion of my salary is spread across all the divisions because I work essentially in all of those at one time or another throughout the year. Similarly, with the Recreation Manager position, that's also spread across the division. So that could be a portion of that change. I don't have the exact details on that decrease. It's a, it's a minor decrease.
Okay.
The large change, I do have a little bit of the details. The large change is a change in allocation of salaries. Sure. Okay, all right. I'm going to go ahead and talk about the fund balance in the Community Services Fund. The Community Services Fund is a special revenue fund, and therefore you'll see fund balance down there versus on Thursday, you'll see the word working capital. Mark does, excuse me, Director Thiemig has an operating reserve policy of 30% of operating expenditures. He is fully meeting that with an excess fund balance of $882,000 expected June 30th of 2019, 20. So, and his change in fund balance is to the positive. So his revenues do exceed his expenditures. Any further questions before we go on to his capital fund? Okay, all right. His capital fund, he's looking to bring, work on a number of projects. His revenue sources include grant proceeds, developer funding, bond proceeds, as well as other proceeds. Another name for other proceeds is yet to be determined. And I'll let him talk about that a little later. And transfers in from a couple different funds for funding these projects. The expected fund balance at the end is $95,473. And I do have detailed slides for each one of these projects if you want to talk about any of them in detail. Please.
So Mayor, Members of Council, one of the projects that we have in our current CIP and continuing on into the next fiscal year is to do our facilities assessment. This is a project we've talked about for some time, is originally proposed to be a Parks and Open Space Plan. But that's going to give us really the data that we need to do good long-term planning. So we're going to go through every park, inventory every piece of amenity, determine its life cycle, and then determine what those replacements costs are. So we can look towards the future and say, there's a play structure at Badger Park, it's about 15 years old, it's got about another five years, and it's going to be $150,000 to replace or whatever the cost might be. Then we'll be able to take those costs and put them into a longer-term plan to make sure we make good decisions on how we invest our limited capital dollars. So that's a project. This is essentially taking care of what are more immediate needs. For example, the doors at the villa that are part of this capital plan that need to be replaced. We have all the other items, we have a number of different items that are sitting off to the side, kind of in a, in a holding pattern, waiting until we get the facilities assessment, then we'll come back. We're also looking towards the future, new TOT money, and having a significant portion of that go towards capital costs as we look past these next two years.
The $275,000 for Community Center Synthetic Turf, that's in the current budget, but that's not currently being executed, isn't that correct?
That is correct, Mayor and Members of Council. That was actually removed from the CIP. We didn't receive the grant funding, and then the Saggio development didn't move forward at that, at that point in time. And so we've actually removed that from the CIP. It'll be a part of a larger discussion as part of that facilities assessment. What do we do at the community center long-term and then how do we pay for it?
Thank you.
May I ask you to show the Pavilion at 3 North Street since we got a $3 million project in 1920? I'm just kind of curious, since we, this council hasn't talked about this, this property for a while, and I love that we have, we're holding on to a vision.
Okay.
But I'm just curious about that one.
We are holding on to the vision, but when I called out yet to be determined, or I call it other proceeds, there is, of the project being about 6.5 million, we only have funding at this point of 1.1 million. There is 5.4 million of what I'll call yet to be determined, or kindly, other proceeds. We do not have, this project is not fully funded, but we are holding on to the dream.
The bond proceeds that are listed in there, the 1.235, those are, those are real, that we've, we've realized those, right?
We have already issued the bonds and their bond proceeds out there, ready to be spent today.
And so they have to be spent on a project that fits the, fits the description of what the bond proceeds have to be for, right?
Yes, but at this point, we need to make sure we, we spend it on a project that, that serves our community. And so any of the projects that Mark has proposed would fit the, fit the use of the bond proceeds.
So perhaps the Badger Park redevelopment?
That could be, the money could be reclassed to that project.
Okay. I'm just, you know, I'm just, there's a lot of stuff here that, for Community Services that we've, we've talked about, but not in kind of a, I mean, in an all-encompassing manner and kind of figuring where everything comes from. You know, I would be really interested in digging a little bit deeper into this, and you know, I don't think that today is the time to do it. But maybe to look at this a little closer and kind of see where, where we want to, what we want to do in this capital. You know, I know in our goal session, we talked about Badger Park, we talked about Riverwalk, we talked about open space, we talked about a number of things that were in Community Services, but it wasn't really that specific. And then here at the, you know, not specific in that we didn't look at everything, right? We didn't get Mark's asks at the same time and kind of compare them to the, you know, the council's goals. And I think, you know, in looking at this, I think it's, that might be something that could be worthwhile to kind of look, bang for your buck, what are we getting here? And I think, I think Councilmember or Vice Mayor Hagley's been talking about, you know, longer-term, I mean, dare I, dare I say the strategic plan word or, you know, something like that where...
So if I, if I can interject, I believe the, the facilities plan that Director Thiemig is talking about will help alleviate some of those questions. However, I do know one of the council goals is Badger Park, and looking at it more comprehensively, I think there's $450,000 budgeted for that, which really isn't going to get you probably where you need to go. I think that was a placeholder for the bathrooms, if I remember correctly. And so I think moving those monies to Badger Park and then not, not abandoning the Pavilion project by any stretch, but at least, I mean, the other concern we have, it's not a huge concern, but it is out there, is we really, we really need to spend those bond proceeds. When you issue bonds, you're, the intent is to spend those within five years, and we're past that five-year period. So that might be something to consider.
I guess that's, that's a point that I'm talking about is that, you know, the, the public has been clamoring for restroom facilities at a lot of our parks. And so that type of bond proceeds, I mean, you could put, you could put bathrooms at Barbieri, Badger, and, you know, maybe another park, and have kind of an instant, and you could, you could do it in such a way that the facilities could be those, the same kind of prefabricated things. You know, like I said, I don't want to get too much into the detail here, but I just think that this is something that I think we should discuss at a more kind of, you know, microscopic level before we make any decisions on this.
Well, this is actually the time to start having those conversations during the budget process. And so if this is an item which council wants to have an additional conversation on you to feel like you don't want to do it tonight, we can definitely bring it back on Thursday night and we can have this discussion in June as well. But I think from, from a staff's perspective, we'd really like to get to some conclusion with regards to where council feels comfortable with this item.
You know, I'm just looking at this, at the price tag for the Pavilion, and it's, it's pretty big, and the bond proceeds are, you know, maybe a third or less of that. And, but then I'm looking at things, some of these other smaller projects that could potentially, we could use those bond proceeds for. I know that we've talked about using the bond proceeds to kind of do the first phase of the Pavilion, but you know, as soon as you pave that parking lot, you know, the effective number of parking spaces actually goes down. So, you know, maybe that's something that we want to think about where, you know, in the future, we have Community Services, the PFT revenue going up, maybe we want to talk about putting more, allocating more money into a capital fund and kind of putting it away. And, you know, maybe in five years or 10, 10 years or something, you'd look for doing in one of these larger projects and maybe getting matching grants and things like that. But in the meantime, you know, the, the bathrooms at the various parks that are kind of like an instant, something that people in those communities will use right away.
So if I could, if it's will the council, what I would suggest...
Why don't we hear from the council just for a minute, if you don't mind? Do you have anything to add to that? Because he's articulating quite a lot. Is there anything, do you agree with that? Or do you agree with that before we jump on it? I mean, because I do, but I want to make sure the council's going in that direction. Because I do support the notion that we could do a lot more with the money than jump on, I mean, I love the idea of the Badger Park is what I'm saying. How do you feel?
No, I, I agree. I'd like to see, you know, maybe on Thursday, maybe that might be too quick, but maybe a staff recommendation on how they would reallocate that and what recommendations and what, what could be the, you know, the immediate impact for a long-term, you know, infrastructure improvement to some of the, the projects that we have.
Giving this, McCaffrey's been saying this, I just want to make sure the whole council's on this. Does that seem reasonable to start looking at the Pavilion, 3 North Street and looking at that money?
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm also not willing to let go of that idea, so...
Yeah, okay.
I don't want it all.
Okay, okay. No bathrooms, I don't want the...
We all want it. We're just, I was just curious if you wanted to start talking about the microscopic that he's suggesting would maybe be the next step.
Well, I, I think that's a good point that, you know, we all want it all, and I too want it all. But I also want to see some progress in some of the things that we brought up and we discussed at our goal session, and one of those was, you know, this, this Riverwalk concept and the, you know, the, and, you know, Badger Park is kind of a launching point for that. And so if you're able to, you know, improve the infrastructure there, then that's, that's kind of a starting point for that whole thing.
So we're basically talking about that $110,000, I mean, 1.1 million dollars?
May I, Madam Mayor? So I guess what I was trying, what it's going to get at is, is if it's will the council, if council is, is interested in reallocating that 1.2, I forgot the number, for the Pavilion, what I would recommend is you allow Director Thiemig to come back with a recommendation of where that money would be reallocated to. I want to make sure there was consensus on that before we went down the path. And then if there is, and, and it's one of council's goals, which will come back, back to council, I think in the June meeting, Badger Park is exactly one of those opportunities along with bathrooms and other areas. So I think with the director hearing those comments, if it's a will the council to reallocate that 1.2 million, I think, let Director Thiemig come back with the recommendation at a later date with that, if that's doable.
I, I think that sounds great. I for one think that sounds great.
And it's, that doesn't mean we're not, that doesn't take the Pavilion project off the board, it just takes that, the money allocated for it right now, out of there right now, and it puts it into something that would probably happen sooner.
And I think that gets with this whole concept of, you know, you have bond proceeds and you got to spend them. And I just don't see a four-point or a $3.2 million project, which who knows what that number is now, being able to be realized before some of those other ones that in my mind have equal importance.
I would also just echo what you said, and so articulately, I think that the bottom line for me is the citizens of the city needs to see, they, there's more utilitarian issues going on. I'm not saying I don't want to realize 3 North Street or whatever we're calling it now. I didn't even know it was Pavilion at North Street, it sounds fun. I just don't think it's a practical thing right now when we look at a bathroom need or a Riverwalk or something that's more utilitarian and much more practical. And I think we should spend the money on something where more people can actually be affected by it. So I'm not against Pavilion at North Street. I'm not sure exactly what it means anymore, but I definitely would support what you articulated. And I really hope this council can do more so that we do get more access to the river as was on our goals. I mean, you kind of pointed that out to me. I mean, you kind of pointed that out to me, Councilwoman Gold, we took that walk. I mean, I think that it's really important for the people to see that we are giving them things that are utilitarian for kids and families and people that live here. So I really would support that. So if you can have a look at that, I would appreciate it. And again, I don't know how the whole council feels, but I would really support what Councilwoman McCaffrey was saying.
So I'll have Director Thieming come back to council, but I also want to caution council. So the next phase in the 3 North project was going to be design review and there was some additional work that was going to take place. So that work will stop for right now because assuming the funding is reallocated. And so I think when we come back to council, you'll be able to give, you'll have more time to think about it. We'll be able to provide a direction with regards to the reallocation of those funds based on the project where Director Thieming would place those. And he can also answer any questions with regards to where we are in the process for 3 North and what the design review process would look like.
Okay, Director Thieming, are you, how does this feel? Is this okay to go Pavilion at 3 North Street? We're going to kind, if it did go that route, does that seem wise in your estimation? You've been living it.
Right, right. So I think what City Manager McElian said is there are some existing commitments, so we need to make a decision on how far we go in design review and see what we've not submitted yet. And so we're probably at a good point where we can get to basically not quite a set of submittal documents, but have everything kind of firmed up related to that concept plan and what was originally going to be proposed and then put it to the side. I think all this ultimately comes back into this facilities assessment. And I think that's really where we can give you and the Parks and Recreation Commission a long-term vision. Here's what it's going to cost to upgrade and maintain our facilities long-term. So that would be the best avenue. I can certainly come back even on Thursday with some ideas on how those dollars could get invested. I think Badger Park is the soonest project. That would be the most immediate project that could really demonstrate a deliverable. Montage is a little further out, but Badger Park could certainly be that.
The facilities improvement report, what, how much, how much does that cost and when do you expect it to be completed?
So it's about $125,000. We've interviewed, we interviewed about three, four firms recently and there are two that really rose to the top that could provide that on behalf of the city and do it effectively. I think it's going to be six months because they're not only looking at the state of current conditions, but they're also grabbing GIS data when they're out there so we can input that right into the facilities or in the asset management program. And then they're looking long-term. So there's some community visioning that's part of it. Not a full parks open space plan, but there's some visioning that would happen as part of that process as well. We might be able to gain some efficiency too. If we roll Badger Park master plan into that process, we're essentially kind of moving that ahead quicker.
So just to be clear, we need to take money out of the North Street project in order to actualize our ideas for Badger Park?
Mayor, members of council, there's some funding that we've identified so far that would go towards Badger Park. There's additional funding I think that would be available in the future. It's not as quick as utilizing these dollars. So I think Counselor McCaffrey said, you know, the TOT...
It's a timing thing then.
Correct. In three or four years from now, we're going to be in a very different position in terms of funding capital projects than we are today. Because the only source of funding right now is essentially our fund, the community services fund. And that will change in the next four to five years significantly.
Thank you. And just, just last minute on this 3 North, whatever we're calling it now, is there any chance of getting it more level? I'm not saying pave it, but is there any, if we just delay that, can we at least not have big holes in it that have water in the winter?
So, Mayor and members of council, we actually went and regraded it, the parking lot last summer and we'll probably do it again as well this year in order to accommodate the farmer's market that was there last summer. We can do that.
Thank you. With that direction, if, is there any other projects that you'd like to talk about or are we kind of done with this for now? And then it sounds like Mark will be coming back with a revised, maybe CIP for Thursday for Badger Park and a revised Pavilion at North Street.
He'll be coming back with a revised CIP if he can do it by Thursday. Great, if not, then we'll be looking at the June meeting, but we'll try and do it by Thursday.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. With community services complete, I'm going to go ahead and move a bunch of slides to Measure V. Okay? This is actually just kind of more of a rehash of what we discussed earlier this year. And thank you, Director Thieming. On November 6, 2012, the voters approved Measure V by a vote of 2,800 to 2,235. The vote was effective April 1, 2013 and automatically terminates 10 years after it became effective unless extended by the voters, which create, requires action on the council. After reviewing the public survey results and two public meetings, on February 26, the council provided direction to staff as to the proposed allocation for fiscal year 1819. Included in that allocation was four public safety positions funded with Measure V funds. What I've got before you is essentially what, what staff heard as the allocation. And again, this is just a rehash that was already discussed for 1819. It includes a preventative maintenance project, an overlay of neighborhood streets project, a curb gutter and sidewalk project, firefighter, police officer and dispatcher funding, police radio replacement set aside, Chamber of Commerce agreement, security and keyless access systems for a number of public facilities, an automated license plate reader, some funding for the low-income utility discounts, and then the $10,000 is a carryover of the Latino Outreach and Support Agreement that will carry us through fiscal year 1819. For a total appropriations in this fund of about 2.7 million. Some of that funding also carries over into fiscal year 1920 with the four positions as well as the commitment to the police radio replacements set aside. But I'll be back next January to start the process for the remainder of the funding.
So we've already voted on the allocations.
You have.
You're just, you're just giving this to us to show us.
Yeah, I am. Just a reminder of what was allocated and, and essentially you've, you voted by motion, but no resolution was adopted. And in June, when I bring the budget resolution for the adoption of the 1819 and 1920 budget, these appropriations will be included. And I just wanted to kind of remind you what, what you did vote on and approve back in February, March.
Mm-hmm. So I guess just like 3 North Pavilion, I'm going to just say to my fellow council members, I really appreciate looking at the Latino outreach and support and seeing that as a number that we can maybe look at to mirror the Chamber of Commerce agreement or something just to outreach to the people in our town. I just think that's not that much money for the future and I would really like to support what's going on up at Community Center. And I just know that, that after going through the ESTAT day and listening to the outreach from the Latino population, I just really want to make sure we have enough money to outreach and continue with the good work and support that good work. So however that works financially, I just want my council to hear. I don't like that we have $10,000 over there and we still give $100,000 to the chamber, which I love, but like to see, you know, a little more money toward that.
If I may, we did turn into agreement with Corazon for the Latino outreach and support. And year to date, we've actually only spent maybe about 20 and any excess at the end of the fiscal year, there's this little process where, where the contract, the budget related to that contract literally will carry over. So my guess is we'll probably end the year at about 30,000 of that 40 spent and that remaining 10,000 will get carried over. So it'll probably be 20 for the fiscal.
And that's based on the contract with Corazon. So I think if the question is, is that enough money? Like the response I guess staff would have is, well, we're always working with Corazon. Of course, if we can increase the scope of services to meet other needs in the community, then we would obviously work with Corazon or any other agency to help, to help do that. So I would not, I guess I wouldn't say it's only 10,000. I think we're always open to be able to work with Corazon or any other group to increase that amount. Then of course, we'd come back to council with that, with that agreement to say, here it is, council, here's staff's recommended funding, whether it's Measure V or something else, we'd be able to do that.
So what I've heard from Corazon is we don't want to be the only group in the whole town that does Latino outreach. And so as a city, I'm glad we're working with them, but I want to make sure we're not, they've said to me, checking a box that we've got Latino outreach, Corazon, that's it. So I just want to just make sure, I'm not complaining, I'm not pointing, I just want to make sure we're being clear that they're not the only responsibility to do Latino outreach and they can't do it all alone. So I agree that you're taking good care of them, we are, but I would love to see even more outreach in different ways other than just that group. And maybe we will see that from a private group come in, but I love supporting that, that effort in this town right now. It's a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no further questions with Measure V, I will wrap this up stating that on, on Thursday, May 17, we'll continue with our budget review. And it looks like we'll be focusing on the utility funds as well as the streets fund and measure S and any internal service funds that need to be touched on.
And I've been reminded to open it to public comment for the last half of that. So again, we do ask our citizens, attend a meeting, get involved, your opinion matters. Is anyone out there hanging in there and want to say something about the budget of the city of Hillsburg? Would you like to come up? We're going to open it up for the last half of the meeting. Are we good? Okay. Thank you, welcome.
I'm representing a third of the entire audience here tonight. Tim Unger again, Plaza Street. So on the concerns page, talks about expiration of Measure V and the unfunded accrued pension liability. A few months ago, I asked of Director Ippolito what keeps her up at night and she mentioned these two items plus infrastructure and haven't heard much discussed about infrastructure or the concerns of infrastructure and the budget pointed towards taking care of some of those issues. Item two, the montage fire station is called out in the development agreement. There's a clawback provision for construction costs that exceed whatever it was allocated for originally, I think it was 100, 1.75 million. I'm curious, where's that money going to come from out of the park's budget? And if not out of the park's budget, how will that, that be covered? And then lastly, with respect to 3 North Street, maybe asking the public how those funds might be spent would be worthwhile considering. That was a pretty sensitive issue with the farmer's market ultimately being housed there. I know a parking garage is something that's been talked about, but every time that gets brought up, we're told that it's $40,000 of space. Looking at that budget of $6.5 million, that's 165 spaces. Thank you.
With that, may we answer those questions?
Yeah, I can at least answer one of them. Regarding the infrastructure, on Thursday, well, most, most of the presentation is actually going to be on infrastructure and focused on the water, wastewater and electric funds and streets funds, and that's all about infrastructure. So that's where we'll be talking about those projects. The other two questions I'll leave for...
City manager.
City Manager McElian, thank you.
Thank you. So regarding the montage fire substation, we first need to get understanding what the cost is going to be. So we've asked, working with Robert Green, to go with a cost estimate, working with either an appraising firm or a contracting firm to find out what that cost is going to be. Once we understand what that cost is, we'll come back to council with some recommendations. I don't think anybody is interested in trying to hit the park $3 million to do that, but I think staff is working through the DA to look at some options and we'll be able to come back to council with that here. Once we get those cost estimates with regards to 3 North, I think the concern, at least I, staff has, is just the length of time those bond proceeds are sitting out there. So I don't, I don't think we're recommending moving away from the project itself, which has been identified by the community for the farmer's market or whatever that name of that project is at this point. I think what we're suggesting is taking a look at that 1 point something million dollars in bond proceeds and utilizing those sooner than later. Because the reality of that project moving forward is probably several years unless someone can identify $5 million to complete it as, as shown. So I think that's all we're talking about. There's one, having to do with the 3 North project. We're not suggesting we do anything differently, then it's already on the books. What we're suggesting is taking that, those bond proceeds and invest them, utilize them sooner than later.
In the spirit of transparency, it might be good just to mention that we are talking about that again so that if anyone did want to come from the public and talk about that on Thursday, we could put that out in the, to the public so they know that we're actually talking about 3 North Street again? Or does it matter to you that we're not?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I think the question is, yeah, I mean, if we can somehow, just if people wanted to say something about it, I don't know.
I don't think we really want to reopen the topic of 3 North Street because that's a whole subject in itself.
No, we're talking about delaying it though.
Well, not really. I mean, we're just talking about moving some funds that were earmarked for it to another purpose, but it's not like we had a, you know, a schedule to proceed with it that we're, that we are delaying. I mean, basically they were going to be used for parking lot improvements or what we're going to use it for?
So I think originally we talked about the project, we broke it into two, Director Thieming might want to jump in on this. We broke it into two pieces. One focused on the parking area and then the second focused on the building itself. And I think the $1 million was focusing on the parking. I think since then, that, that discussion has evolved into trying to do the project all at once, but I would defer to Director Thieming.
Correct, correct, Mayor and members of council, we did actually price out, you know, essentially phasing the project construction into actually three phases. One would pave the parking lot and then do the, a portion of the event center and then the entire event center as well. And so, you know, there, there is options in addition to moving ahead with another project, there'd be options of moving ahead with a portion of this project. You get into efficiencies. It's much more efficient to do an entire project all at once than it is to try to phase it in over time. And so those are things that we can bring back on Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, especially if we're talking about spending it on planning, that's pretty risky if you're not going to actually execute for some years because the community's vision can change in that time.
Yeah, I mean, I think the 3 North Street is still on our wish list, it's just we're not going to make a layaway payment on it. And in the meantime, with that, with that money, we can actually, in my opinion, get some things that, right away for some instant gratification, meaning that instant public benefit that we've been talking about for a long time and it's aligned with our goals. So I just thought there was kind of a two for there.
And I would agree. I think if we were going to, if we were up here saying, hey, how about an affordable housing project on that site, how about the parking garage or something that's different than what we've been discussing, then I think it's a whole different matter. If we're talking about, you know, hitting, you know, just using the funds for where we can use them now to get some immediate benefit, I don't really see that as being that controversial.
It's not about, I didn't mean it to be controversial at all. I was just saying it's a good thing that people know that it's, it's on the agenda that we're going to go ahead and moving forward and the council's made a decision that they want to spend that bond money on what we're, what was already proposed. I mean, I don't think it's, it's like we're opening anything up as much as we're being transparent about how we're allocating money that, and it's, I agree. I'm, I don't think there needs to be any, I just thought it'd be good to mention on the agenda. All right. So thank you very much for, for being part of this evening. It's always a wonderful thing and we appreciate all the directors and all the managers of these departments and different aspects of our city. City Manager, once again, you have a lot to be proud of, you have really good people working with you and we appreciate your patience and, and support in getting this city to have good benefits for everybody and also do a good job, fiscally responsible. Thank you. You're an amazing person with money and we appreciate you.
Madam Mayor, I really want to echo that with Director Ippolito. She's done an amazing job over the last several months putting this budget together, working with staff. And hopefully Wednesday, Thursday night will go as smooth as tonight did and then we'll be able to adopt this budget on June 6th, 4th. Why, I'm not sure what's happening on, whatever's happening on June 6th is not the budget being adopted, so I'm not sure what that is. It should be June 4th.
Oh, it's typo, okay.
June 4th, Mayor.
Okay, June 4th budget adoption. Again, thank you so much, everybody, for hanging in and go enjoy.
June 4th. God, I keep messing up those days.